This meeting to order. I do it every single time. I'd like to call this meeting to order at seven o'clock, and I would ask that Cindy Ege, the city clerk, read the statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act into the record, please.
This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act with the posting of the annual meeting schedule in the Trenton Times provided to the Hunter County Democrat, the Trenton Times, and with the notice sent out to various individuals on the listserv, department heads, the city engineer, and city attorney. The meeting agenda provides for all actual items known at the time of publication and is subject to change. This meeting is being recorded using the Zoom meeting platform.
Thank you. May I have your call, please?
Councilwoman Lambert, here. Councilman Sanders?
Here.
Councilman Segman?
Here.
Council President Taylor? Mayor Nowick?
Here.
All right. Would you please stand for a bunch of lesions and a moment of silence?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
You're being standing, please. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming tonight. I'd like to just say thank you to everybody who's here, especially we have some extra people here tonight for this meeting. We have a little bit of city business to do, and well, it's all city business. We have a few things, minor things, to do, and then we're going to kind of move into the meat of the evening, which is an examination of the 2022 introduced budget. So I'd like to welcome Michael Drewless and Ryan, I forgot your last name, Ryan.
Berger.
What is it?
Ryan Berger.
Berger, that's right. Excuse me. Nice to have you with us, Ryan. Also, we have both our CFO, Chris Pataglia. Good evening, Chris, wherever you are on Zoom. And this is Chris's last day with the city, and we have our new CFO, will be starting tomorrow, also on the call, Kristi Errett. So welcome to both of you. We also have Stu Baycorn here this evening, a special guest star, the deputy treasurer. Thanks for being here. So again, welcome. We have a few, as I said, we have a few kinds of things to get through before we get to the budget. The first thing on the agenda tonight is the nomination of Russ Lambert to serve on the Parks and Recreation Committee, filling an unexpired term ending 12/31/2023. So I think that most of you probably know Mr. Lambert. You've all read hopefully a brief bio of him and know that he would be an excellent addition, I think, to the Parks and Rec Commission. I will note for the record that Russ is married to Councilwoman Lambert here, so we will ask her to abstain from participating in this conversation. So are there any questions about this nomination from the council?
I'm curious to know whether he would have gotten her vote, but again.
We can ask later once the lights are off. All right. Hearing no questions or comments, may I have a motion to confirm this nomination of Russ Lambert?
So moved.
All right. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. One abstention and no nays. Thank you very much. The next is Resolution Number 94-2022. This is a resolution to authorize the EMAA grant for the 2022-2023 cycle. This is to authorize the EMAA grant for 2022-2023, and this grant is used to fund the Office of Emergency Management Staffing. Fairly straightforward. I don't know if anybody on the council has any questions about this.
I just have a quick question. Does this grant cycle or this grant, does it have an expiration that we know of, or is just?
Yeah, it goes July 1, so it would start July 1 of this year and end June 30 of 2023, and you have to apply every year.
So, right. So my question is, is there a time when they're just going to say, we're not doing this anymore, or we don't have that information?
Well, they could, but they get the notice from the federal government, and then they send it out to us saying that the grant's available, and then we all have to go for training, which we did, and then you submit all your paperwork. So I think if that becomes a time when the federal government decides to not offer that grant, they'll let us do that.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? If not, I would like to ask someone to make a motion to authorize the EMAA grant.
It's a move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The motion carries unanimously. The next resolution is Resolution 95-2022. This is a resolution to amend the 2022 meeting schedule to remove the July and August work schedule of sessions from the council. This is just a resolution to shorten our summer by just having two meetings instead of four. And I personally like that idea, so that's why I'm hosting. Are there questions about this?
If it's an issue that needs another meeting, you can always do a special meeting.
Of course.
It just takes this one off the calendar.
Yeah.
I support it. I'll make a vote.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Yeah, I'm so excited. Yeah. I'm so excited that I.
You can leave it at once.
I'm going to do all of it, yes.
Okay. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries unanimously. Now, we are going to move on to the budget discussion. So I'm going to, so the way I'd like this to go this evening is I'm going to talk for probably about 10 minutes or so, 10 or 15 minutes, just to kind of go through some of the budget with the public, and then we'll have a couple of presentations from department heads, Kent Rogers from Construction, Cindy Ege from Clerks, and Robert Brown from the Police Department, just to give a review of their budget this year. They're three of the larger budgets, you know, three of the larger budgets in the city. So we just want to give them a chance to speak to their budgets and say whatever it is that they think is important for us to know. And then we'll go through a couple of other things, and then we'll open this up for public participation. So the 2022 budget. So now I've been mayor for just over five months. The finance team and I have met almost weekly for the last five months, certainly several times a month to review the budget. We've gone through it item by item, I think pretty carefully, and I have a pretty good working knowledge of the appropriations and the revenues. And this budget is put forward, you know, kind of bearing all of that in mind. And I thank Michael in particular for his expertise and Chris Pataglia, who really have been valuable to me in terms of getting me up to speed on how some of the basics of municipal finance work. So it's been, we've actually had fun. There was one incident with the water cooler. We tried to, so I tried to save a little money on the water, the water system, and it didn't go well, so we didn't do away with the water coolers in the municipal buildings, but we did have Stu Baycorn buying us a less expensive alternative. So we took the budget seriously. We had some fun. We went into deep dives on basically every single line item in the budget and talked about ways that we could, we could account or change or edit or shift, or really pay attention to each individual line item. So, you know, a couple of things about the budget, and I thought that this would be a good way to begin a conversation. Back in December, I was on a call with S&amp;P Global Rating Call to establish the bond rating for Lambertville. That came out to the city in February. Copy of it's been posted to the city website, and I think it's a good way to begin the conversation with the budget, because I think some of my strongest beliefs about what's appropriate for our budget this year are really reflected in that report. So I'm just going to read a couple of portions of this report, because I think that, I think that the S&amp;P says it much more eloquently than I can. So, and this is posted to the city website. So the initial, so I should note that our rating this year was moved, was downgraded from AA stable to AA negative. So we did take a loss in rating this year. Our Moody's rating is due out tomorrow morning, so that will also be posted to the website probably as soon as I can get the final version of that. But it's important information for us to have, and I think it's important for us to use it in terms of framing some of the priorities of the budget. So their outlook revision reflects what we have, what we view as a weakened budgetary performance and reduced financial flexibility following consecutive negative operating results, reserve drawdowns, and cash balance deterioration in recent years. In our view, there's a 1 in 3 chance that the township will be unable to regenerate both cash and current fund reserves to levels that are comparable at the AA rating level within the next two years, and that a fixed cost remain, and that its fixed costs will remain high in relation to those of peers at current rating level. We understand that the unaudited estimates for fiscal 2021 project increases in cash and fund balance. However, should management be unsuccessful in restoring and sustaining balances to levels that we view more commensurate with the current rating, we could further lower the rating. So one of the points they make is that they believe that the use of reserves in recent years has really weakened the township's financial flexibility and may no longer be strong enough to support the rating. They also note that a high overall carrying charge reflects pressure on the budget for the township's fixed costs, which include debt, pensions, and other post-employment benefits, which total 35% of our budget in 2020. It's a very high number. Given the relatively small size of the budget, even small revenue or expenditure shifts have a larger effect on operational performance and as a result, you know, reserve and cash levels. So the only other, the only thing I'll just note here is that in their view, the township's debt service carrying charges are elevated, making up nearly 23% of the budget in fiscal 2020. When combined with the pension and other payments, fixed costs total 35%, which is higher than we typically see, typically see at rating levels, and this will add to additional budget pressure if not addressed. So see, these are probably the core issues, I think, in our budget. We've been using our reserve funds the last few years to kind of, you know, kind of, you know, run our city, to run our operational budget, and that's very problematic, because we're drawing down our reserves at a rate which is unsustainable. So that's, I think, one of the most important points that I would like to make this evening. So just a couple of other things before I turn it, turn it over. So I sent out a copy of the overview, and I think that there are a few points in here that are, that they are just taking a formal look at in the meeting, and I'm just going to read through some of these. The proposed budget for 2022 is a total expenditure of $6,449,114.41. It's supported by a municipal levy of $3,502,933.52, and excludes the library levy. The tax rate for municipal purposes will increase by .042, which is an 11.25% increase over 2021. This is going to result in an average tax bill of about $43 per quarter additional over last year. Our expenditures increased by $385,754 over 2021, which is a 6.36% rise. And I think it's really important to note that this increase is comprised of capital improvements and debt service, which is $117,287.50, $84,338.35 for the first five years of COVID emergency payments, and $70,578.97 increase in insurance costs. So that's increased just this year, so that's not the total. That's just the increase for the year, which is a significant number. The remaining $113,549.68 relates to increases in operational, operational expenses, and is only, it's less than 2% of the increase over the 2021 appropriations. So, you know, when we talk about the budget, one of the things that we like to emphasize and really hammer home is that at the end of the day, we don't have a lot of flexibility in terms of what, you know, decision-making in the budget. There's just not, the fixed costs, the things that are there that are, that are unmovable expenses are pretty high. In caps, we have about $400,000 worth of swings, which is, you know, basically means that we have about 95% of that budget is unmovable costs. So, and I should say here that if Mike or Chris hear me say anything that sounds not right, I want you just to say, "Mayor, that's not right." So it's important for me to be, always make sure that I'm getting my facts right. So I want, I want people to jump in if they know I, if I've misspoken. So will you do that?
Of course.
Raise your right hand. Thanks.
I'll be the net.
Okay. Back and forth, the volleys, truth, truth and numbers back and forth, a respech segment. And, you know, when I talk about the budget, so my budget priorities this year really are in this last bullet point, and, you know, they maintain levels, funding levels for our departmental expenses. They do expand operations and public works in solid ways, and I'll talk a little bit about that later. It includes a significant rebuilding cost because of Tropical Storm Ida, invest in deferred capital needs for equipment and vehicles, continues to reduce financial reliance on depleted reserves. We began to make investments in long-term contractual obligations, and I'll explain that a little bit more in detail later. We also want to regenerate surplus, and we have, I think, conservatively assumed increases in our post-pandemic graph figures, and I'll talk a little bit about those maybe in a few minutes. Just to touch on the capital improvement projections, so these are, this is the capital improvement projections, these are all items that we've already bonded for, I believe. So far to date, we've bonded for about just over a million dollars in Ida recovery. This is to, this is for repairs to our culverts, to our streets, to basically any infrastructure that was damaged during Ida. So that's a, that's a big number. It's not as big as was projected last December. We had very high projections last December, so I hope that the city feels like it can take a little bit of a breath and feel grateful that we're not actually borrowing $7 million this year, which was some of the, I think, one of the original numbers back in December. So while this budget may not seem like a terrific, terrific news to everybody, it's not as bad as we thought it might have been last year. And I will note, I will note that FEMA will reimburse up to 90%. So that 75% number was changed. The president signed an executive order increasing the number to 90%. So on almost all of our FEMA-related, on all of our FEMA-related work, we should receive a reimbursement of up to 90%. I would also just note that in that bond, there are, there's about, let's see, $65,000 for repairs that were not covered by Ida, and those are repairs that we will just have to pay flat out for on Quarry Street and also at Alves, Offen Creek, where we've been unable to find any funding to help us with debris cleanup there.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yeah?
So the Ida recovery reimbursed up to 90%. That's 90% of the one?
Correct.
Point zero. Okay.
Yeah. There are some, there are some engineering costs in there as well, so, you know, I, that's generally true. I can't give you the exact number, but it's up to 90% of our reimbursable costs outside of the figure that I mentioned, and also any engineering costs that will not be covered.
So over time, the true cost to the city will be lower than this?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. And I would note that as money comes in from FEMA, it will go, it will go directly to pay down the notes. That's my plan. In terms of Ida recovery, again, we have this USDA NRC CS grant. We borrowed half a million dollars. We didn't need to borrow the full amount of the grant, which is great, saves us a little bit of money. And that will, that, that will be basically our portion, so that will be what we have to pay. We won't, we won't really be getting any of that money back, because that represents nearly 25% of the total, the total grant. We did borrow some money for the road projects from '20 and '21, and we will be getting grants to reimburse those in the amount of about $263,000. That work, by the way, is due to start next week, so that's, that's some good news for people on Cottage Hills who've got some bumpy roads. We do have vehicle purchases as a capital improvement. This is a police Ford Explorer, the new trash truck, which we've talked about, and pickup truck for the DPW. And lastly, we have equipment, coin counter, live scan, fingerprint machine, and some technology infrastructure upgrades. These are all, I think, really necessary things, and we've talked about this during, and we've gone through all of them, but the bond ordinances on these, we've had plenty of public comment about it and discussion. So I won't necessarily go through the rest of this, other than to say, you know, there are sections where there are increased revenues, flat revenues, you know, revenues that are decreasing, all of it's laid out pretty well. The one thing I would note is that in terms of the decreased revenue lines, the city does, we are seeking to reduce our reliance on our reserve accounts, so that's a big number. We, 2021, in 2021, we used $400,000 of reserve for debt, the payment of debt service this year is only $100,000. This is a hard, this is a big number, but it's putting on us a path to greater fiscal stability, even though it doesn't, you know, even though it's a tough number. I think that's all I'm going to talk about for now. We can get into some of the, some of the details. Michael, is there anything that you want to highlight before I kind of turn this over to, to the department heads?
I think your point on revenues is important, and just like to add that the number in which this budget targets down to $100,000 a year is sustainable for future years, and that's how that number was achieved.
Thanks. Chris Pataglia, do you have anything that you wanted to, to say?
Nothing at the moment, Mayor. I'll jump in if there's anything.
Okay. Great. Thanks. So at this point, I'd like to maybe just have, yeah, did you have a question?
Yes. I wanted to ask Michael, Michael and Councilman Segman and I met about a week ago, and we talked about reserves in general, surplus. We talked about surplus. And you gave a really good explanation, which I can't regurgitate, about why it's important to keep this surplus, anticipated surplus, at a lower number versus a higher number relative to the tax increase. Could you maybe summarize that for the public?
I think that's a great question, actually. I think that for a lot of people who don't understand the stuff, it's very confusing.
It is incredibly.
So, yeah, this would be a great thing for you to just kind of touch base on.
Sure, sure. So the budget allows us to anticipate surplus from, that we've accumulated from previous years into this year's budget, and that number this year is a quarter million dollars. The mayor referenced early on the S&amp;P rating. The S&amp;P rating is how the outside world views our creditworthiness, and if anyone's been through a mortgage process or a credit card, it's a very similar process. One of the first things they look at is your use of surplus. And while you're, you're permitted to use it, you should only use an amount that you know you can safely replenish each year. And surplus is generally replaced by fund balance. Maybe we exceeded our revenue numbers, or maybe we didn't expend as much as we had thought we were going to expend. That extra money goes into our surplus fund, and then the next year we may draw down on it for our current year budget. Using a quarter million dollars, through Chris's calculations, the orders' calculations, if everything goes that's supposed to go in this budget, we know we will put a quarter million dollars that we took from surplus coming into the year back to our savings at the end of the year. And so it's essentially no different than having a savings account at home and knowing when you get paid, and to use that cash in that savings account, maybe in the low points of a month between paychecks, but you're only taking it because you know you can pay it back. So a quarter million dollars is a calculation that we know is sustainable, that each year we can take a quarter million dollars and be able to turn it back in. The optimists in the room would say that that number is conservative, and if things go well, we could, we could generate even more surplus. Is that about what we talked about?
Yes, that is. And it brings to mind a follow-up question, which is, so if we exceed this $250,000 in 2022, and say we get $350,000, does that excess roll over into future years, or, in other words, is surplus something that you can, you know, continue, like your savings account, you just keep adding more to it?
Yes.
So does it grow?
That's right.
Over time?
Exactly. Every year, year over year, you keep it on the balance sheet, so to speak. So it's an item that every year you can continue to grow and grow, and it's, you know, when the rating agencies look at us a year from now, they're going to see a larger amount of surplus sitting in that reserve based on the budget report.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just general about the budget?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Do you have a question? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I do.
Okay, great.
Fortunately, I didn't bring my notes with me, so I'm going to try to remember this a little bit. So on the, the period that the rating agencies have looked at, is they look back in time, or is it snapshot as the present condition, I'm assuming, right?
It's generally based on our financials.
Yeah.
So they probably, they will look at our 2021 annual financial statement and our annual debt statement, which was published in January, February of this year for 2021 activity.
Gotcha. So I was a little bit curious about, you know, if I was looking at the creditworthiness of the city, we have, you know, the potential for additional revenue coming here in the cannabis, the 2% tax that we passed. I know we can't bank that, there's still a lot of time. I was just curious if the agency, if it's something that the agencies would be considering as they, you know, review our condition.
Well, you know, we talked about that in the Moody's call. I, we talked about, we had a long conversation about the overall health and promise of our economic state, and that was something that I certainly highlighted. And they, I think they found it interesting, whether it, I mean, you know, I can be very charming on these calls, but when it actually changes our bond rating, I don't think it really matters, right? So, you know, you can be, I mean, I was on the call in December, and it was a, it was a go-get-'em call, right? But it didn't get 'em.
Charming, but.
Yeah, yeah. Didn't, didn't change the reality. So, you know, it's up to, it's up to Moody's to decide whether, you know, whether three pending cannabis licenses in town is worthy of consideration this year.
Oh, well, no.
Well, no tomorrow morning.
I have some notes, but maybe, if there's any questions.
Yeah, I mean, we can come back to your questions. In the meantime, why don't we, why don't we start with, Ken? If you, if you don't mind, just, why don't you just step up to the mic and, this is Ken Rogers, the construction official here, and thanks for coming tonight. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. We're looking forward to a very heavy year in the construction office. We're probably at construction levels we haven't seen since Lambert Hill was being built in the city. We're probably building between 17 and 21 new homes in the city this year. So it's a, it's a large number of new homes to be built for our area. There's many, many alterations, additions, renovations going on within the city. Our normal permit numbers for a year are somewhere in the 350 permits per year, sometimes more than that, occasionally a little bit less than that. This year, we're already at about 250 permits for the year. So that's approaching a normal year, just in the first third of the year. So there is a lot going on in the city. Our revenues for this year by mid-May were at about $140,000. We do project them to exceed, possibly far exceed $300,000 in revenue for the construction office. So there's just, just a lot that we have. We've got new codes that are going to be adopted this year, so we have some expenses in new codebooks that we do approximately every three years. We have to spend somewhere in the neighborhood of $3,000 on new codebooks publications that are necessary to keep our office going and keep planning reviews being done. As far as Frenchtown is going for, for budget issues, they're a little bit slower than normal this year. We are expecting five single-family homes to be built up in Frenchtown this year, with, and in addition, six new townhouses by the Country Classics in their project that they have going on there. And then there's an unknown number of townhomes that are going to be built in the old George Michaels project. The property, I think, has been sold a couple of times, and the new buyers ready to get going, get that project going. I think there's maybe 24 new townhouses in that, in that development there still to be built, and then there's a new mixed-use building with apartments on Bridge Street in Frenchtown. So, so the overall outlook for revenues for our department is very, very good. And we're working on staffing and the ability to make sure that all of that work is covered and that we don't have any issues. What's been proposed in, in our budget in the way of numbers, we'll cover what we need. And I believe we'll just collect other adjustments. And I believe we'll just collect other adjustments that have been worked on so that we can make sure that the city's needs are covered and that that budget is a fair budget and will cover those expenses.
Great. Thank you so much for being here. Does anybody have a council question for Ken?
I have a question. So you mentioned the Frenchtown activity is lower than prior year. Right, but they had a big, big boom of building last year, right?
Yes, and that is continuing, it's just the
It's just starting to
actual permits for the work that's going on there have been held up a bit just because of logistics on the site for the Country Classics project.
So do you expect Frenchtown's, I guess, revenues to, I guess, meet the requirement that Lambertville has regarding that arrangement?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. And the new activity in, you know, in Lambertville, which is, you know, obvious given what we went through last September, what, what do you anticipate or project that additional, that spike of activity? How long do you anticipate that roughly? I'm not going to hold you to it, but just, you know, there's got to be a big boom, the, the, you know, the number goes up, but then at some point it either levels off and then starts to come down. So could you give me some sort of projection as to when you think that might happen?
The, the spike in work from the flood from Ida is gone.
Okay.
We, we still have a lot that we're picking up on, and there are still a few projects that have not been started. We dealt with waiving a lot of permit fees last year to cover all of those, those projects that were especially done within that first month. But that, that spike, I'm sure is, is already gone, has been gone for a couple of months. What we're dealing with right now in the backlog of work that we have in the office is just normal construction unrelated to flood issues.
Okay. So you mentioned twenty-four units on a George Michael property. I, I, I don't know what that is, if you can enlighten me.
Sure, if you go into Frenchtown and
Oh, it's Frenchtown, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that, that was a Frenchtown.
Okay, I'm sorry. No wonder I was confused.
Yeah, we've got seventeen to twenty-one new homes that are going to be built here.
Right.
Some of them are being built on Wilson, and others set across the street from the project, there is on Wilson. There's a couple up on Belvedere, there's four over on Delavan. And the other ones that are, that we're expecting, I can't think of where they are right now.
There's twenty of them.
Ferry Street.
Yeah.
Yes, Ferry Street, we've got, well, we have three going on on Ferry Street already.
And that's really where the increased activity for Lambertville is this year, and those, on those projects?
It is both in the new homes and the elevated number of renovations and additions that are being done here in the city as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Cindy, would you like to speak to the clerk's bicycle?
Sure. Okay, so in my office, we have salaries for the deputy clerk and for, for me. That's the only thing that is in the S and W line. And we're projecting, we're asking for a 2%, which is well below the cost of living. And a concern that I have for that is eventually as people leave and you're replacing them, you're replacing them at a much higher level, and at some point that's going to hit your budget. So I think you need to start giving some consideration to that. My office also handles a lot of the advertising for all of the ordinances that, that we, we adopt. We have, we have to advertise pending notices, we have to do adoption. All of the boards and commissions have to advertise their meeting schedule. All of that comes out of my budget, and I handle all of that. Postage, you know, every time that we do a redevelopment, some of them require that you send out a notice to everybody within 200 feet. That can be quite expensive. So our postage is eighteen hundred dollars, last year was twelve hundred. But we gave a little bit of a buffer because the price of advertising has gone up, but also we know that we have redevelopment projects that are works. Printing, we took that down to nothing. We, we had a couple last-minute reviews of the budget, and we gave up our printing fees. Legal services, anything that is outside your normal gets charged to my budget. So let's just say we had somebody submit tort claim, and maybe our insurance company said, we're not going to cover this. So that would get charged to legal line in my budget. Professional consulting fees, that is like for the website, that is for anything outside of our normal, like Google. We use Google for our email accounts, Google Drive, our shared drives, things like that, that all gets changed to there, charged to there. We just have our normal supplies, but I wanted to focus on some of the other things that we have, like a codification of ordinances, right? So whenever you do, you amend in one year, we have a company that we use, a service that we use, that we send every six months, I send all of the ordinances we're adopted, and they update it on our website. But at the same time, they send us a hard copy, and that hard copy gets distributed to five different departments. So that when the court needs it, and they have somebody coming in that wants to, you know, issue a ticket or file a complaint, they have the most current version in front of them. So you always want to make sure your, your ordinances are codified and up to date because that protects you, protects you from any, you know, outside lawsuits. And election expenses, well, this year we have new voting machines, which I'm actually very excited about. And even though the county pays for it, we rent them, we reimburse the county for a portion of it. So this year for elections, it's going to be a little different in that, you know, in the prior, you would just go in, you'd just hit what you wanted, hit your, submit your ballot, boom, you're done. Well, no, this year it's a little different. You're going to select what you want, it's going to print out a, you know, a chat for the, the, a chat, I guess they call it, for lack of a better word, you would look at that, and if that's what you wanted, you'd put it back in the machine and you'd say yes. If it's not, then you have to, they have to go back and start over and void it. So it's giving us first what we have never had, which is a paper backup. So we did increase our election expenses by a little bit, but we kept it the same. This year was a presidential, presidential is always more expensive, but we kept it the same because I do expect that our fees for using those new machines are going to increase. Other than that, that's my budget.
Do we leave that five thousand dollars in for digitizing records?
Now, that is, that's a capital expense. Right, so that doesn't come out of my operating budget, but it, it is a capital expense. And what we're hoping to do is slowly chip away and get rid of the paper and digitize everything. Of course, there's some old records that we'll never get rid of because they're beautifully handwritten from the eighteen hundreds. But the more we can get the weight off of the building, and the more that we can store things digitally, it opens up more space to add to the hall that can be used for other purposes.
So I'm not clear, you said that getting the ordinances updated, that outside firm does that? They update the website to make sure that that's correct, but they distribute hard copies to several departments?
It all comes back to me. We all have our very initial book that was given to us, and then they'll send you the pages that you have to pull out of the old book and put the new in.
Don't question. If it's online, why do we need paper?
Because when it's online, if you, like, I can log in and have full access to everything and download things, but not every department can. So they have it right at their fingertips that they can copy. Like, for instance, let's say somebody came to court and they wanted, and they wanted to sign a complaint against somebody. And let's just say it was something out of, like, maybe they let their lawn get too high, right? And now they have bugs and things, and so they want to sign a complaint. Trish can pull the full ordinance, which is what she'll need in order to attach it to the complaint. But you wouldn't be able to necessarily log on, I've never done this, but try it. If you go into codification, you can do a search and it'll bring it up, but it's difficult to copy, to pull that full, the full ordinance.
Okay.
So this gives them some flexibility. And then also, what happens if, if our internet's down, you've got that person in front of you, you still have to have that paper backup to be able to give them an answer.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
No other questions?
Would you like to step up a little?
Always something over there, you got to keep an eye on, on the left side.
I do my best.
Thanks for inviting us today, Department Heads for the city. This is nice to be able to come, present our budgets to the council members and the mayor. And I know we have our budget hearings, but it's nice, I think, to hear directly from the department heads what our needs are, if they're being met or not, and it's a good chance of being able to do it tonight. Thank you very much, Mayor, for letting us be able to present that tonight. But anyway, get back to the budget. For the police department, we have nine sworn police officers and one special police officer. And for support staff, we have one office manager, a full-time parking officer, and two part-time parking officers. With that staff, in the last three years, we still have positions open, I do not fill. We have a position, a part-time office staff person, we do not fill, and also a class-two special police officer, which was part-time, which I did not fill. So if you go back to some, to two years ago with the budget, you saw there was a decrease in the salary, the wage. That's where our decrease, the decrease came from. So just to talk about a little bit, the, we all know that the officers have a contract and are obligated by that contract, so the salary wage is pretty much set by that. With that being said, with the contract that was, that was drafted up at the beginning of this year, at the end of last year.
Last year. And can we just clarify for the public, it's a four-year contract this time, right?
Yes.
As opposed to a three-year?
Correct.
Thank you.
And the first year, the officers did not take a raise. And so moving forward to salary wage, if there was, there was an increase, which you see for salary wage, is because some of the officers still moved up in steps. The salaries guide in the contract is set up in steps for a certain amount of years, so the steps not get raises on there, but the officers had to move up to the next steps. So that's what you saw, if you saw increase of that. Going back to the, to the budget, the operating, the operating expenses that we have in the city, if you look at the, I was doing a little research, we go back to looking at what operating expenses are that, that was put in for, it was fifty thousand for, for this year. I go back, and guess what it was back in 2017? It was like fifty-six thousand, and we're still operating on 2017 budget. How, how that, how we do that, I have no idea. Sort of I know, because when I started, we had thirteen officers, we're down to nine sworn officers now. So that makes up some of the, some of the, for the budget, and that's how we can make it, that's how we made it up for that. So anyway, amazing that we can get through that, but some of the bigger ticket items I wanted to address, the live scan, we addressed that for like, for two years now, I think, Michael, and we've been pushing it off, and it's mandatory for the bail reform act that came out, that anybody that, for violent crime, domestic violence, has to be fingered for the reason why they do that. It takes out the, actually out of the police, the prosecutor, and the judge's hands for bail being set. It actually scores what the bail should be, and that's if they should be lodged or not, being going to the county jail. So that's something that we really do need, and I'm glad that's being placed into the budget this year. And the other big ticket item was the police vehicle. We had a six-year, when I took over four years ago now, the police director at the time, we've had it for many years, a six-year rotation for vehicles. It kept our costs down for vehicle maintenance, and it kept the vehicles in pretty good shape. Because when I first came here, for whatever reason, that was, that was twenty-eight years ago, the police vehicle we had, I think we were down to like two vehicles at the time because we had the amount of officers, we were running two officers in each police vehicle, and that was it. And, and they end up, when they hired the first police director, ended up, within a month, hired, getting two new police vehicles in that same month to sort of get the fleet back up for renting again safely. So we had a six-year plan, we're, we're off two years by that, so that's why you'll see some of the vehicle maintenance costs up. And the vehicle that we replaced that was involved in an accident last year, so we put that off, and then we're finishing up with this year. So we're still off at two years for vehicles, so the vehicle maintenance cost is still going to be a little higher. But again, we'll, we'll get through it for the next couple of years. So, but anyways, and the coin counter, we discussed that in the budget hearings. It's, it's older than I've been here, so I've been here twenty-eight years. And it used to be at City Hall, when we were at City Hall, we had the police station in the basement. It's always, was always in the meeting room there. So it's over thirty years old. And now my officer actually has to separate all the coins in a box, and we can only put quarters together. So we're looking at, I think we're looking at six or seven thousand dollars a week in coins. So he's sitting there separating the coins, nickels, and dimes, so we're taking hours and hours to do that. It's just not cost-effective to be doing that, and so that's why we're looking at a new coin machine for this year. So just something to reflect back on from last year, you know, from, from Ida, prior to that COVID. You know, we were able to keep the police station open twenty-four hours a day, even for, during COVID times. At least we were able to minimize the effect, the effect rate at police headquarters and still be able to run our minimal staffing requirements. And we had emergency plans in the county set up where we had to be away from other police departments if other, if police departments went down because we could lose, it's a small police department, because we all share computers, we all share cars. So that was our concern, that the whole department would be taken out during COVID times. Luckily, that didn't happen, we migrated through it, and so with that being said, even for last year with Ida, just want to run some numbers through you, for you. For, so the amount of road jobs, you see the construction jobs where we have Elizabeth Town Gas, police officers directing traffic, doing traffic control. We had two thousand three hundred seventy-seven hours for last year. So we, also the new park, temporary new parking signs that you see out there, it's unbelievable, but the numbers that we came up with, it was close to ten to five thousand dollars. Good question. During Ida hours, this included the officers that were working along with the overtime hours that we had for Ida, was over thirteen, excuse me, one thousand three hundred sixty-five hours. And that really took a toll on the department that we had only nine officers. You know, so we worked, you know, for a couple of weeks straight, not much sleep, but we were able to get through that. And I want to thank the officers that are online today, I want to thank them for the dedication that they did through, through that. So they really helped us out. But that's all, I'm going to wrap up, I don't want to take too much of your time, but does anybody have any questions?
I do. Go ahead, please. Yeah, so a nine-person uniformed office is, how does that work with roten? Are you able to make your rotations work and schedule those rotations with nine?
Correct. So when the police director left, I filled, I filled into his spot, right? So that took me out of rotation, which makes it difficult. So what we had to do, which is a normal process now, is doing a twelve-hour schedule with three on, three is on, three is off. That's the only way it would work. And all the departments, at least in Hunter County, had switched to that, we were the only ones that had to hold out on that. So we had to move that schedule when the police director left to be able to fill our minimum standards for operations. So that's how we were able to make it work with the, even downsizing, even down to nine officers. And a good point that you brought up, I had four officers last year resign and go to other departments. And there were better-paying departments, a couple were in Hunter County, one was Somerset, the other one was in Mercer County. However, that brings up another subject I didn't know if we wanted to get into, but it's short, so we're going to jump right into it. That, that special officer that we have, it's a full-time special police officer. He, he has three years to get a full-time police job, or his certification runs out. So what happens is every year I'm retraining this, this special police officer because he's got to get a job where his cert runs out. And it, and again, so it's usually by, within between eight to twelve months, we're replacing that officer. I'm spending three months of field training for that officer, about eight thousand dollars. That's just for the officer, that amount, and he hasn't done anything for us yet. That's just for the officer, that amount, and he hasn't done anything for us yet. He hasn't gone out on patrol yet on his own. He hasn't wrote a ticket. Spent $8,000 a year just on that officer. That doesn't count the field training officer time. Now I'm taking a sergeant off the road to train this officer for three months. It's not really cost-effective, if you add it up. And so it's something that I think the mayor and I will look at for coming up for the next year, because we lose a lot of good people because we're going to full-time, the department, they're getting a full-time cert. They have to do that, where their full-time cert will run out, and they'll always be a Class II special police officer. And most of these officers are pretty young. They've just gone out, got back from the police academy. They probably spent usually six months, or three or four, excuse me, three or four months at the shore. They come out, and they're already been to the police academy. So that's saving the city and any other police department, because these short towns are training these police officers, not us. So they do, when we do bring them on as a full-time officer, if a position opens up, it's a two-week waiver course, they call it, to get them, bring them up to the full-time police officer standards.
Thank you for that. The second question I had was about, so if E-Town Gas is doing work in town, and you have officers stationed there, the impact of that extra work on the, A, the cycles you have, the 12-hour cycles, and then also, the money that's paid, I think, comes from the utility. Is that outside the budget amount? That may be a question for you, but is that outside the budget?
Yeah. In fact, the city does receive money for that, right?
We received approximately $48,000 from that last year. That's what the city, after all the FICA payments and everything else, Sue came up with the number of like, $48,000.
And then taking them, because that's extra work. So in trying to, you know, make it nine pieces.
Right, so yeah, so you have four officers that are technically off when there's that other squad is on. So you have four officers to draw from, except for that two-week period when they switch from days to midnights, because it's a short turnaround. So, but normally, you have four officers that you can draw from on your days off.
One of the questions I've heard from a number of members of the public is your overtime. So this year, we've budgeted about $80,000 overtime. And I think that you and I have talked a little bit about kind of what the past thinking has been about this overtime, and that it's often easier just to pay people overtime than it is to hire another officer to kind of fill in what would normally be, you know, a position. Am I correct in that?
Correct. Anytime, right now, because of the staffing levels that we're adding, to keep the minimum staffing requirements, it's automatic overtime when somebody takes off. And that's something that, you know, the administration knew when we downsized the department. So that's kind of, is kind of what it is because of that. With that being said, last year was pretty low because, and the year before that, because nobody was taking any vacations off because of COVID, and then with Ida, we didn't have manpower, and the officers didn't take off. So we're back to normal again. So, because vacations are back off. So anytime somebody takes off, or somebody's out sick, and that runs into an issue, if you have an officer that has health problems that are taking off, and needs to take off a month because he's having surgery, or two months, that really puts us in the bind for the overtime. And again, from emergency services, and I'm not talking anything new, like Mr. Drols is aware, for emergency services, you always had to have, you don't know what's going to come up, right? You didn't know why that was going to happen, right? These are some things that come up that you always want to have, be prepared for. And that's why sometimes, if money's not used at the end of the year, it gets moved out. But at least for emergency services, that's there in cases needed.
Okay. Yeah, I just thought it was worth noting, kind of how we approach overtime and what it really means. You know, it's to some degree, because we're short-staffed.
Understaffed. Right. And at the end of the day, it's like, you're never going to do away with overtime completely. You could have a large department, but you could probably cut it, we can work the numbers, you could probably cut it in half, but then you figure the salary and the benefits package, something that's add-up total to look at.
Yeah, I just thought it was worth noting.
Correct.
So what you're saying basically is the $80,000 is being spread in a way that doesn't generate additional health and benefit packages, because it's just distributing the hours with officers that are already sworn officers.
Yes. And if you have the manpower to fill it, so far, you know, we have been, and only, there's a handful of times where I have had to force officers in to work. But that's just the nature of the business. Weekends, the one month's work weekends, the area, or when their time, when they're off on the weekends, because it doesn't come around every other weekend or every weekend. So when an officer does have off, and somebody else takes off, now you're forcing that officer, and that waited his two months to get a weekend off, now he's forced into work. So that's, you know, that's where we play with, you know, where you add officers or do the overtime, you know?
Mayor, as it relates to overtime, if I may.
Yeah.
I think the, this is a very reasonable number compared to the overall salary and wage budget. And, you know, I commend the lieutenant, because that takes a daily approach to scheduling. And I think it's relative to my understanding of where this number is, and if the community's a similar size, it's properly utilized, so.
And it's harder with contractual also, because, and it goes back to some of the training, another point that you brought up, we just finalized additional for training, for de-escalation. That was something that I was looking at back in December. However, decided to bring that on, and we, outside the Attorney General's guidelines of the 16 hours of additional de-escalation training that we received this year, we did an additional six hours of actually hands-on, scenario-based de-escalation. We brought somebody in for that. And it was very important, and he was a very good instructor, worked with him before. And so that was an additional cost that we had to look at. But training, again, to have a police department, it's going to cost, and we know that training is number-one priority for what's going on and for police officers. And we're going to try to do the best that we can. But when again, it goes back to a nine-man department, to be able to get guys, officers trained, guys and girls trained, now you're taking down that schedule, right? Who would I replace them with there? Now that's overtime to bring somebody in to be able to cover that shift, so they can go to training. So that's where that falls into place at it. But I think we can have some discussions this year to how to maybe manage some of the personnel, especially with the victims for investigations, because I don't have a dedicated detective following up on these cases. I have part-time officers that are working the road and trying to do detective work, too. That's not the best either. And so I think we can try to work something out for better utilize some of the staff that we have.
Thank you, sir. You know, while we're on the subject of the police department, just one other line item that I wanted to highlight, because I don't know that we've done this, Michael, correct me if I'm wrong, that accumulated leave compensation, is this really the first year that we've had a significant number for the accumulated leave compensation? So I just want to highlight this, the accumulated leave compensation appropriation is $30,000 this year, and we have not done that. And basically, what that refers to is contractual, future contractual obligations at the police department. So we have carried over vacation hours from year to year. We have comp hours and sick hours that get carried over for each employee. It's a contractual obligation. Those are significant numbers. And it's something that we need to be planning better for. $30,000 is not, it's not a lot, given, you know, I have a spreadsheet in front of me. The total for the department currently is about half a million dollars, spread across the entire department with all their accumulated benefits. This is not a number that's been worked into the budget at all. It's not something that we planned for. But as officers move through their careers, they build up this time and these benefits, and we rightfully need to be planning for them. So this year, we will start to, we will begin to have a separate line item to accommodate future payouts that will be necessary for these items. It's a small, it feels like a small, I mean, it feels like a big number to start, but it's actually quite a small number relative to the accumulated costs associated here. So I just wanted to highlight that, and thank you very much, Lieutenant Brown.
Okay, can I ask a question about the, this is the first time, I think, we've put that in our budget that I can recall, and boy, we really should have, so we're here to applaud that for including that. The number, though, is not reflective of, it wasn't calculated based on any, you know? How was that number arrived at?
So these numbers were, Robert and I have the spreadsheet, which I'm more than happy to share with the council, looking at the, at an individual's hourly rate, his vacation hours for this year, carried over vacation hours, comp hours, and total sick hours. So the spreadsheet allows for the current pay, right? So if an officer has, you know, 170 carried over vacation hours, that's, the number that I have is calculated as his current pay rate, not necessarily his future pay rate. So this is a conservative, the half a million dollars, which I, you know, which is low even on the spread. I didn't do it, you know, I didn't do it down to the penny, but that's a conservative figure when we begin to, these numbers are all calculated based on the 2022 salary and wage numbers.
And just to be clear, the sick day carryovers, I mean, we changed that policy years ago in our handbook to not allow for payments on a going-forward basis for carryover sick days.
This is not, this is not the police, this is a separate contract, right? So the police have a?
It would be the police contract.
It's a police contract that allows for this.
So that's part of the collectively bargaining agreement, is the carryover sick days.
Yeah. And I don't know when that started. I don't know if Lieutenant Brown knows when that started, but, I mean, you look at some of these numbers, and you're talking about, you know, 1,400, 500, 2,000 carried over vacation hours? That's going back clearly years and years and years.
Yeah. Vacation time is different. I know that the state has, over time, had a great deal of scrutiny around payout for sick days. So it's just something I think we need to.
Well, yeah, I mean, this is a part of the contract.
I understand, it's part of the contract, and we need to meet our obligations.
Right.
But going, I mean, I can just, I just remember, like, you know, Inspector General reports from the, at the state level, you know, cracking down on this. So, you know, you can't change something in the past, but on a go-forward basis, I would urge whoever's in these seats to take a look at the, again, vacation days.
Three and a half years.
Sick days.
I think the next, the next time, the police contract comes up, it depends.
Just for the sick time, counsel, maybe if I, if I could speak.
Please.
It was lowered down to state standards. Each time we redid the contract, it was lowered down, like, whatever it's a state mandatory, it's like, might be $5,000 total payout now for new hirees. But we have changed it each time the state, the governor's signing the executive orders for each change. So.
Is this related to police only?
No, I think for any government employees, municipal or state employees.
Okay. Yeah, but my recollection was, was that, I can remember reviews of local units, and really cracking down, saying you shouldn't be paying any sick day. Maybe I misremembered that.
Yeah, they lowered it down to, it started out at 20,000, going back when I first hired, so you get people that are grandfathered in at that, but all new hirees are at, like, probably, I believe it's 5,000, so I'd have to look at the contract, but we do meet the state guidelines on that.
I think we have some officers that, what is the oldest, or I don't want to say the oldest, but the longest employee? And when was that person hired, what year, do you know?
That would be me, so I was hired in 95.
So it probably predates a lot of that. We do have a couple officers who've been here several years, and they probably predate the changes that were made in the bargaining agreement. So that's why it doesn't apply to that. Officers hired after this date, it applies to them.
So it's basically your hire date, not the date of the bargaining agreement?
That's correct.
Well, the contract, which you were hired under, stays with you through retirement, unless a subsequent contract agrees to amend that contract.
Okay. But for our non-bargains, what do we bargain, staff, that there is zero, remember correctly, there's not.
There's carryover.
Well, I'm sorry, there's folks that are grandfathered in, but after the change of policy, there is not an ability to carry over.
So I think there's not, nothing? So it doesn't get paid out?
No, although that has not necessarily always been past practice.
Well, maybe some, yeah. So there's something to work on there, I guess, yeah.
All right. So before we move on, because we'll move on to correspondence, announcements, and then public participation, does anybody in the council have any other questions, or does, Michael, do you have anything else that you'd like to add?
I have a couple of questions I can give.
Sure.
So I just wanted to say that, I know that you said, Lieutenant Brown, the equipment, it should sound familiar, because it's been requested for so long. So I do appreciate that a lot of these have been deferred capital improvements that are necessary. So I'm glad we're finally taking care of those. The debt service, my recollection is that there is relief in sight, that we have sort of a debt cliff, or a drop-off. I wish it was a cliff, but it was certainly a drop-off. So we're paying 1.5 million this year in debt service, if I remember, or close to 1.5. When we, how far is the drop-off under, and what year is that?
Do you notice, or shall we refer to Chris?
He has seconds in front of him.
So Chris, can you take a look at this? I thought it was around 2025 when we had our big drop-off. Can you give us some basic information on projections, please, for debt service?
Mayor, that's exactly right. 2025 is when you're, you're, the first year that you're, 2003, 2010, general obligation bonds are fully mature. So in 2025 is most likely, actually, 2024, towards the end of the year, is most likely when you'll want to sell your next round of bonds for any debt that you incur between now and then, or have already incurred. To date, that's currently in short-term financing. But the drop-off goes down about $525,000 in the 2025 budget year.
That's, I mean, that's.
Yeah, that's great.
That's the year to get elected, by the way.
Unfortunately, I have to try before that, I think.
The, and it did, so, and then the reserve for debt service, if we could talk a little bit about that, because I know that had been quite high and had been depleted over the past, you know, two, three years, I think, has been. This year, we went from 400 to 100,000, and sort of pulling from that. And how much is left of that reserve for debt service?
Chris, can you speak to that as well, please? Just a little history on debt service and where we currently are, debt service. I mean, reserves, excuse me.
Not a problem. The reserve for payment of debt service is generally funded with proceeds from premiums from debt sales. So whether it's short-term or long-term financing, sometimes you get a premium on those sales, and that'll get deposited into your reserve for payment of debt service. Sometimes you'll receive grants that maybe weren't anticipated as part of the, as part of the ordinance itself. That'll get deposited into the reserve for payment of debt service. And in other scenarios, you might have ordinances that you canceled, and cancel them directly to the reserve for payment of debt service, so that you can reduce the overall debt on those ordinances. Currently, as of 12/31/2021, the balance, the balance of that account was 197,236,81. And we're utilizing $100,000 in this year's budget, compared to 400,000 utilized last year, and 941,000 in the year prior to that.
Can I just add a little bit to that?
Please do.
You know, Chris and I have been watching this number closely as we've been doing relative budgets, because it's a number that you have to tackle year over year, and not let me handle my budget here. And I think that we've got it wrangled down to a point now where $100,000 drawn out of that this year is a sustainable number for the future, with some of the borrowing ahead of us between the items that Chris talked about. So it's my hope that this is the last budget year where we talk about this item as a standout item, and that it just. and that it just starts to flow in our budget as any other budget.
So, the replenishment of that would be on the order of a hundred thousand dollars a year, you think?
Approximately. And there's still some money left in there for next year if...
So, there's a hundred thousand that could be used next year to...
Offset.
To, to, but then we'd be at our, at sort of a break-even, sort of a, kind of a concept, you know?
I think it was in, in twenty nineteen, Chris, no, twenty, twenty twenty, that that fund was going to be completely exhausted, and because of special emergencies and the COVID, we've been able to stretch that out, and we're receiving the benefit of that this year by stretching it out.
And, yeah, I can, I can jump in again, you know, in, in, in future years, so, you're, you're going to have a ninety-seven thousand dollar balance as of the day that you adopt this budget, assuming that the hundred thousand stays as is. You also have a hundred and seventy-seven thousand in your general capital fund balance, so that leaves you with roughly two hundred and sixty thousand dollars of what I'm going to call runway for the next couple of years that you can utilize in budgets. The idea is going to really be to slowly get off of using the, these funds, with the exception of receipts that you receive in the prior year intended to offset interest costs associated with the debt service. So, if you, if you were to cancel an ordinance that you had already had debt on, you would want to use that in the following year. But it, it's, you're not going to keep a flat hundred thousand dollars over, you know, the next decade. It's, it's going to, it's going to change year over year based on, you know, premiums and, and anything that's canceled.
That's, that's a helpful, I appreciate that, Chris. The, the other thing I wanted to note is that the, you know, last year, we had a commitment to increase staff salaries and to add a benefit for prescription drugs, which we've never had before. So, I did want to note that that, you know, that I'm sure is impacting our budget this year because there's, you know, obviously higher wages and that, the prescription drug benefit. I mean, I'm glad we did it, and it was a commitment to our staff, but it obviously has an impact on, you know, the budget on a continuing basis.
So, there's a seventy thousand dollar increase in benefits, and part of that is, you know, it's all together. We would have had an increase in health benefits anyway.
Yeah, but the prescription drug package is, is pricing, so. I think that's all I had.
Right, I actually have, I, I forgot a couple of things that I wanted to mention just before we move on. You know, there are, it's not just a question of what's in the budget, except for me, there are a couple of, a couple of notes to make about what's not in the budget. I recently had a couple of residents ask me about the role of a business administrator, and whether that was something that I was going to consider this year or next year. This was something that came up kind of over the course of campaign last year. And I said I would wait, I would come in and see sort of how the work went for me and, you know, kind of where we were. And so, I've just had this question this week again. Certainly, we're not going to hire a business administrator this year, and at this point, I feel fairly confident that we will not need to do it again next year. I'm feeling pretty good about my role and my ability to kind of do this job full-time. So, you know, I'm not committing to not doing it, but I'm saying that one thing I would, I would rather do is put the money somewhere else if we have a choice. One, one of the other things that I, that I would note is, let's see if anybody can answer this question. How many buildings does the city own? Anybody can answer this question quickly?
Six.
Nope?
Fourteen.
Close. We have thirteen buildings under our care as of the purchase of the Glossin Farm. And the last time anybody picked up a paintbrush in the city was probably, I don't know, when, right?
Two thousand and nine.
Thank you very much. Two thousand and nine, for the record, so that's, how, how many years is that? I'm very bad at math.
A lot.
Don't say that, present this. We can still use that brush, though, right?
Yeah.
Maybe a little hard.
I don't think that brush is going anywhere.
So, so a couple, I just want to talk a little bit about my priorities. You know, I didn't talk about the, the Department of Public Works and this, this in particular. So, you know, for me, one of the priorities, and you'll see when you look at the appropriations, is we've hired three new people at the Department of Public Works. We're now back up to full staff. And I'm very pleased with the staff that we have there. We've also hired, we have two full-time people and a dedicated street sweeper who's getting to the hills and who's doing all kinds of good work. So, you know, I, I, I've been very sensitive to tax increases and our budget and the woes, I, I really am. But I think that, for me, you know, it's hard to pay high taxes without always seeing the benefit, right? And so, for me, the idea of getting the trash picked up in the central business district and getting a sweeper on the hill and just making sure the town looks nicer is a fundamental priority for me. And that is reflected in the budget and in my choices in terms of appropriations. So, when we, you know, when we talk about this, these increases, that's been a focus for me. And, and I hope that the city feels like it's something that, by which they've benefited when they look out their, when they look out their windows and see things looking a little bit neater. And I would thank the Department of Public Works, I think they've done a great job. That said, you know, given the fact that we do have thirteen buildings and we, we have zero dollars in the budget for any kind of maintenance for the buildings, next year, rather than hire a business administrator, I would consider hiring a part-time person whose sole responsibility it is, is to go around and take care of our buildings. City Hall needs paint, the windows are in terrible condition, there's all kinds of things. So, you know, when we talk about the budget and how hard it is this year, I get it, but, you know, we can't have everything we want unless we pay for it, right? So, these buildings are important to us, we have a lot of historic buildings, and I just wanted to note that we continue not to take care of our buildings, and that's a problem for me. And I think it's a problem for, for, for the city. So, so something to consider for next year, I'm going to just put it out there. So, that, that's all I have to say, other than, yeah. So, I'm going to move on unless anybody has any questions about the Department of Public Works or anything I've just said there. So, just a couple more things before we move to public participation, correspondence. We have a resolution from the Lambertville Cable Television Advisory Committee, request for expansion of functions to include potential ways to bring competition to Lambertville, reviewing and assessing residents regarding complaints, and educating residents regarding the regulations providing assistance to the mayor and the governing body. Maybe you'd like to take a minute to talk about this since you're on the commission committee?
So, we haven't met, certainly not in the last three years, but, and maybe even longer. But it is an energized group, and the initial ordinance enacted by a prior, you know, what's later body is at a very different time. And so, there's a blending of kind of issues and interests. You know, we've all gotten emails as, as, as council members, I'm sure the mayor, about cable rates and the cost of, you know, it's, it's a big cost for a lot of our residents and for everybody that has it. But the idea of, you know, this, you know, the, the cable box and, you know, it just, the world is changing, is how we're consuming information. And, and so, the, the thought was from the commission is to, just to broaden the authority, because it is limited in our existing ordinance, to allow a little bit more flexibility to explore those options and to make sure that they're operating within the scope of their authority. So, so, I'm on the commission, and we were all very supportive of that. We have a very energized group that wants to go out and meet with all sorts of vendors. They want to educate the public, provide more information on our website, steer folks to resources that are available. So, they, they, they want to do more than they're authorized to do. So, it was, it came with strong support from all members of that body. So, I think we would need to amend our ordinance to reflect, if folks were okay with it, to reflect the expanded scope of their authority.
Great, thank you for that. I, I don't know about the rest of the governing body, but I'll look forward to, to that, to those changes and, and having a discussion.
Yep.
Thank you again. One announcement, I just wanted to highlight that the city did win, or it did, was awarded a twenty thousand dollars grant from Sustainable Jersey and P S E and G for trees and native plantings at the Union, North Union Street Park. This is a great thing that, that happened, and Marianne Borch Bravo, one more time for, for Marianne, who wrote the grant application. The trees, I couldn't be happier about it. The Parks and Rec Commission will have a public hearing on this matter on June eighth, just to kind of walk everybody through the plans and to answer any questions or to hear any comments. The council will then do the same thing at its June nineteenth, sixteenth?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth meeting, and then hopefully we'll be able to move forward with planting of the trees and herbaceous native shrubs in the fall, which I think is going to just be a wonderful thing for the north, north part of town. And just lastly, before we go to public participation, I just want to highlight that we, you know, this budget hearing, not budget hearing, but this meeting that we did tonight was really my idea, and I wanted to give the public an opportunity to participate a couple of times in understanding kind of the budget and knowing that we're here and that we're listening and that, and that we want to be engaged in conversation. So, you know, in addition to the, to the budget hearing, which we will do in July, I think, unless there's some issue that we can't adopt in July, right?
I believe it's, it's up for adoption June sixteenth.
Oh, it is, okay.
It's on, it's on for June sixteenth, but we have to receive approval from D C A. However, you can always have the, the public hearing and carry it to the next meeting.
Okay. All right, so then, the sixteenth, June sixteenth, we'll be back doing a version of this again, making sure that the public has the ability to ask us questions and to participate through comments and whatever. I would also just mention, reiterate that I do hold a weekly office hours. This last week or two has been, haven't had that many people up, so I would encourage people to come up and visit me at Washington's headquarters on Wednesdays from three to six. Happy to go through this line by line, answer any question that you have. Want to make sure that they're really satisfied that what we're doing is responsible and appropriate, and that if you have any questions, that, that we're here for you. So, with that, I would like to open up the meeting to public comment. I would just note a couple of things about how we do public comment at city council meetings. Members of the public shall provide their comments from the designated podium unless they have flexibility or mobility issues, at which point we're happy to make accommodations. We are, we do ask that you state your name and your address. You are able to give uninterrupted remarks and/or questions, up to three minutes, unless additional time is granted by the council, and all remarks and questions should be not addressed to a specific council member but to the governing body. At this time, if there are people, members of the public who wish to speak this evening, if you would please step to the podium, give us your name and, and proceed with your comment or question. We will wait till you're done before we respond.
My name's George Sarusas, and I'm at Titus Road in Lambert Hill. Welcome the opportunity to listen to the presentations, and I commend the mayor for arranging this sort of a pre-discussion of, of the budget before it's introduced. I look forward to seeing the line-by-line item and to the public hearing. A couple of questions, a couple of phrases that were utilized, which I find quite interesting. One was the budget surplus, anticipating the budget surplus. Now, a budget surplus is ordinarily accumulated over the years when the, when the taxes exceed the expenditures. So, my, my first question is, how, how long did it take to accumulate the current surplus? How much is the current surplus after spending the two fifty for this year's budget? And following that, what is an appropriate level of surplus to maintain? My other question is about the term reserves, reserves for debt. I'm curious as to how one accumulates a reserve for debt. If you borrow a million and a half when you really need a million, that, that constitutes a half a million in the kitty that you can use for, for payment. But I, I just don't understand how you can accumulate a reserve for debts. And secondly, I think someone mentioned that our reserve for debts has been going down. Have we been using the reserves, however, however they were accumulated for our debt service? And finally, on debt service, I think I heard the figure that our debt service is a million and a half on a six million dollar budget, plus the need to restore two and a half million dollars, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, to the surplus. That sounds like a Herculean task for, for taxpayers. Lastly, I, I still like to comment and commend the police chief to, to run a twenty-four, seven department with nine, nine people. I think that's, is damn good. That's about all I have.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to?
May I just let Chris talk about the surplus numbers and projected, if that's all right?
Right. So, Chris, so the questions are, how long did it take for us to, to accumulate surplus? How much is left? And kind of, is there a, considered an appropriate level of surplus that a municipality should have as the best practice?
Sure, Mayor. So, the surplus balance is, is a, it's a, it's a live number. And, you know, it, it not, it didn't accumulate over any number of years. It, it's, it really, you know, you, you're utilizing certain amounts of it, you're replenishing certain amounts of it. There's, you know, about a dozen different ways that Lambertville has replenished and utilized surplus over the course of the years. You know, we only touched on how it's replenished, but we, we didn't really, you know, touch on how, how we lose surplus, right? So, if you, if you look back in the last two, two or three years with, with COVID, you know, we anticipate a certain, a certain amount of revenue, and, and you might get less of it because maybe there's not, there's no parking in town because nobody's going out, or, or the hotels aren't being occupied and you're not collecting that tax, right? So, so there, it's, it's a live number, so there, so there's really not a good answer to that. The other point that I want to mention here is, you know, it's called surplus anticipated on the budget document, but the formal accounting term is fund balance, and, and Michael did mention that before. And it, it really is used to balance your current fund. And, and what I mean by that is, you know, you've got a, you've got a six million dollar budget, and you've got an amount to be raised by taxes of a little over three million dollars, right? So, you collect that quarterly, you're, you're collecting that February, May, August, and November, but you have expenses in January, you have payroll to make, you have, you know, debt, debt service obligations, insurance payments to make, and general operations. And fund balance gives you the cash buffer to be able to make those payments while, while you're waiting for the quarterly tax payments to come in, you know? And we do have, you know, a little over two point six million dollars of miscellaneous revenue, but that's not, it's not linear. You don't, you don't get exactly one twelfth of it every month. So, the fund balance allows you to manage cash flow. The appropriate amount is really something that's, you know, determined on an, on an individual basis, depending on what else is going on in, in the municipality. I came on board a couple of years ago, and when I came on board, I did a surplus analysis going back five years at that time. So, my surplus analysis goes back to two thousand fifteen, and in two thousand fifteen, you had an opening balance of one million fifty thousand. And, and that's about where we're going to land by this year. So, you're looking at it over a long period of time, eight years, we're about flat in our fund balance. You know, there were some, there were some highs and lows, mostly lows due to, due to COVID and, and some of the subsequent events that occurred, but it's really just, it's a live number, you know? So, the, the amount of time that Lambertville's been in existence is how long it's taken to, to generate a million dollar surplus balance.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Now, we're on to the questions about accumulating reserve for debt and how, and have we been using the debt service? Or how, I forget what the exact question was. Have we been using, yes? Just talk a little bit about the debt service the last couple of years, and I think we talked a little bit about it, but maybe just to review it.
So, in the past couple of years, that reserve for, for debt service that, that Chris went over, what its intention is, how you build it and how you use it, you're really supposed to use it just to offset the cost of borrowing over time to reduce the burden on the taxpayer so that as you get to these times when the, when the bonds are made and money is due, you can use that to slowly close that gap. The reserve for debt service traditionally, in the last few years, has been used to offset operational costs. So, rather than getting it from fines, fees, miscellaneous revenues, from the, from the levy of other grants, the cost of operations year over year were being drawn out of that reserve. The problem with that is if it's not being replenished at the same pace, you're paying for operations with, with money that may not be there in next year.
Okay, I can, I can understand how the budget surplus, he said, Chris said it was a million and a half. Okay, I can, I can understand how the budget surplus, he said, Chris said it was a million and a half, and it was accumulated over the years, up and down, depending upon, upon the positive and negative flows of the cash. But I still, I'm, I'm, I'm at a quandary to understand how the reserve for debt service is accumulated. And are we talking about two funds? One is the surplus fund?
Yes.
And the other one is a reserve for, for, for debt service? So my, my, the question is, how do we accumulate a debt service other than through taxation?
So you, you accumulate money in that fund through, when you sell your notes into bonds, you're given a premium payment, that money is given to the city, and it gets put into that fund. The state allows us to set up certain designated funds for certain purposes that year over year, we can leave money in for, for savings. That's one of them. With the, the question about surplus, you know, how much should you have? That, that's the magical, that's a magic question the rating agencies look to. But if you think about cash flow, you probably want to have the equivalent of three, four months of expenses sitting in that surplus, not in your anticipated surplus, but in that cash account otherwise. The reserve for debt services is really not used traditionally as much as it's been used here in Lambertville. And I think over time, you're going to see that it's not going to be used in the future as much as been used in the past.
In other words, you borrow a million dollars?
Mr. Serusas, I'm sorry, we don't typically have a back and forth.
Okay, fine.
I, you're, I'm going to ask, hold on, and, and if we've got nobody else in the room or online, we can come back to you. I want to make sure that you understand everything, but also, we have a kind of a protocol here. So if you can just hang tight.
Sure.
Is there anybody else in the room who would like to ask a question or, or share a comment? Seeing none, Mike, is there, are there people in Zoom land who would like to speak?
You know, we, we have eight people attending, but there are no answers.
Okay. No answers. Okay, did you want to just, why don't you step to the mic if you have a follow-up question, and then we'll?
Well, I, I still don't, I don't quite understand how you accumulate a reserve for debts unless it's through taxation. I assume you can, what you, what you say, you can borrow a million dollars and you get a million and a quarter for it, but you only pay back a million, is that, is that what you're saying?
You, you principal amount, but then you have to pay that interest back.
Let's say you float a, let's say, let's say you float a bond for a million dollars. How much do you get from that sale?
On a premium, it depends on, premium is determined by the person who's buying your debt.
The bank?
The, the many banks, the many bond houses. And they use premium to attract, attract your sale, so you, so that they, they want you to accept their deal.
More, they, they sell, they, you, you, you borrow at five and eight, they charge you six.
Let's say that everyone's offering 3% of all the people who want to buy your note, but this company's going to, but this bank's going to give you $50,000 in premium on top of that interest rate. So it becomes a more competitive.
So we have to borrow money to rebuild the reserve then?
In most cases, premium is the quickest way to do that, yes.
Mayor, I think we'll need to talk a little bit on this. Sure, of course, excuse me. Go ahead, Chris.
A, a perfect example of how we're going to replenish this reserve for debt service over the next couple of years is your FEMA reimbursements, right? We were just discussing how we had to sell debt, or we're going to be selling debt on the Hurricane Ida repairs, and that we're expecting 90% reimbursement on a lot of them. And you're going to be utilizing that to offset the debt incurred. So let's say you sell a million dollars to, to, for Hurricane Ida repairs. You're going to have principal and interest payments over, you know, the next 10 years. But if we, if we collect $900,000 from FEMA over on that million, we're going to utilize that to, to reduce the debt service, so that you're not raising that million dollars in taxes, you're utilizing the, the grant to, to pay that off.
Okay, I, I, I don't want to, you know, belabor the issue, but I, I guess the main issue is a taxpayer. I'm concerned that this is not a regularly budgeted item. If we're going to rebuild the loan reserve, it has to be on a particular irregular basis. That's all I want to say. And I'm looking forward to getting the actual line items.
Yeah, so, so the budget is available on the city website. And I, I meant to mention earlier that, you know, as, as I spoke a little earlier in the evening, we are just in transition between our CFOs. The incoming CFO I talked to, I had an exchange with her, I think yesterday. The user-friendly budget, which is really the one that I think is super helpful, will be, will be posted to the website in the next couple of weeks. It should be done by, I think, I think she said June 10th. We'll give her a little, we'll give her a little time tomorrow as her first day, so we won't, we won't harass her too much. But the user-friendly budget will be out and posted to the website, the city website soon. And you'll find that document a much easier read, it's only, you know, 10 pages as opposed to 80, and it's very succinct, so. Good, well, thank you for your comments, Mr. Serusas, is that it?
Yes.
Nice to see you, thanks for coming tonight. It seems like we have no other public comment, so at this time, I would like to have a motion to close the public comment period.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. And at this time, we are, we are finished, so if someone would like to make a motion to adjourn?
Still moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight.